...directory. Other options include city bill pay and even viewing city social media fees using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon and then select your choice from the menu. My LA 311. It puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as the last of the great train stations. It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted Mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive Historic Cultural Monument Designation from the city of Los Angeles in 1972 and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to The Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
You may have noticed that at some intersections, the walk sign at the crosswalk starts a little earlier than the green light for people driving. This is called a leading pedestrian interval. It's a transportation term that means those of us using the sidewalk get a three-to-seven-second head start over cars. Giving pedestrians just a few seconds to fully enter the crosswalk makes it much more likely that drivers who are making turns will see them. This very simple timing change can have a big impact on street safety. Leading pedestrian intervals reduce crashes between people driving and people walking by as much as 60%. Moving LA forward.
We've reached nearly 500 megawatts of installed solar as of last year, and so 50,000 customers that have caught solar. If I'm a single-family homeowner and I want to go solar, what do I do? Our net metering program is available. If you want to purchase a solar system and help reduce your bill, you can do that. But if you can't afford to make that investment in solar and you're a single-family homeowner, we will actually partner with you. LADWP can install a solar system on your home and will actually provide you a monthly check for partnering with us on that solar program. And that's called our Solar Rooftops Program. Information on that program is also available on ladwp.com/solar.
Today, we take a big step forward by creating the Community Safety Partnership Bureau in the Los Angeles Police Department.
This isn't an LAPD program. This is a community program.
This is big, and in police world, this takes courage. It sends a message across the country.
I for one will say, this is the only way that I've seen in a systematic way where you can do policing in communities like South Los Angeles, where the community feels like the police department works on their behalf.
It's a joint venture to improve the safety and the well-being of people who have never felt safe.
One of the important components of this program is the forgiveness. Understanding our history and what has occurred in the past and not being afraid to say, "I'm sorry," and that's what this program is about.
Trust is the best crime-fighting strategy. This is the future of American policing.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Hassan with the US Census Bureau. Do you have a few minutes that we can complete your 2020 census?
Sure.
That's wonderful. Thank you, sir.
The 2020 census will help inform decisions on how billions of dollars are allocated annually for critical public services like roads, schools, hospitals, and healthcare clinics.
We've been clear from the beginning that getting together in groups outside of your household is not allowed. And these sacrifices help us manage access to the economy and a paycheck, keep more businesses doors open. But all the sacrifices can be undone by those who refuse to follow the science. Some research has shown that 10% of people cause 80% of the spread. These super-spreader events have a disproportionate impact on the lives that we are losing. As our County Department of Public Health said yesterday, and I quote, "The highest-risk settings are large in-person gatherings where it is difficult for individuals to remain spaced at least six feet apart and where face coverings are not worn." While we have already closed all nightclubs and bars, these large house parties have essentially become nightclubs in the hills. That is why tonight I am authorizing the city to shut off Los Angeles Department of Water and Power Service in the egregious cases in which houses, businesses, and other venues are hosting unpermitted large gatherings.
I'm standing right here on Fifth Street to celebrate, in the heart of downtown, the mark of the completion of the Fifth and Sixth Street Improvements Project. We repaved and restripped the streets to deliver better road conditions for everyone. So whether you're getting around by foot, by car, by bike, by bus, by transit, we want you to have a better experience. Getting us to have better transit is a key piece to a better quality of life. So we look forward to replicating this in your neighborhood.
Okay.
Yes. I did four and three. But if you want to take four instead of three, it's up to you. I separated it through the referrals and then real sixteens. Okay. Okay. Thanks, Erica.
So there's seven twos.
Yes, seven. I should be keeping a list. Referrals. Seven, and that was two real sixteens. One commendatory and four referrals. Because I should have this in a stack. I don't even know what pile I want anymore.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 18th. I'm Norey Martinez, the president of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin here.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, present.
Sadio. Sadio. Harris Dawson.
Present.
Corretz.
Here.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
Wesson.
Here.
Sadio.
Yo, presente.
Fourteen members present in a coram, Madam President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes of August 12.
Mr. Buscaino moves, and Mr. Bloomingfield seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Wesson moves, and Mr. Rue seconds.
Turn the music off and get the, uh...
Ms. Rodriguez, do you... Can you lead us in the flag salute this morning, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, just go ahead and run through the agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. Would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order.
Thank you. There has been a request to continue item 22 to Tuesday, September 1st, and the department has requested items 1A, B, C, D, F, H, and I be continued 30 days to Tuesday, September 22nd, and to receive and file items 1E and 1G as the fees have been paid.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order next.
Items 2 through 5 are items noticed for public hearing. For item number 4, a technical correction is required for the record to strike the words "city-owned real property" from the agenda description and recommendations. Items 6 through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 18 through 30 are items for which public hearings have not been held. A motion is required for items 18 and 19. Finally, items 31 through 32 are items scheduled for closed session. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, do you wish to, um, call any of these items special or introduce an amended motion? Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call item 19 special for a clarifying motion.
Clarifying motion. Are you introducing anything?
Uh, yes, I'm intro... Introducing, uh, a... A new motion to clarify the original for item 19.
Okay, you need to read that into the record, sir. Item 19.
All right.
Go ahead.
Shall I do that now?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I move that we approve item 19 on today's council agenda relative to consideration of and actions related to statutory exemption sustainable communities environmental assessment, communication from city attorney, and ordinance first consideration relative to amending the Vermont Western Transit Oriented District specific plan, otherwise known as the Station Neighborhood Area Plan, to establish new definitions, land use regulations, development standards, and design guidelines for a new subarea D.2 for permanent supportive housing for the construction, use, and maintenance of 454 permanent supportive housing units, 23 restricted to extremely low income, 50 restricted to very low income, 376 restricted to low-income households, and five market rate managers' units on 94,623 square-foot site. The proposed project includes five eight-story buildings, including the northeast, northwest, southeast, southeast-a, and southwest-b buildings with maximum building heights ranging from 92 feet to 95 feet, and a total of 247,812 square feet of floor area, including a total of 11,772 square feet of resident supportive services space, and that includes interior open space. The project will provide 23 vehicular parking spaces located at grade and 251 bicycle spaces, and will provide a total of 36,580 square feet of open space, including interior and exterior open space, for the property located at 317 through 345 North Madison Avenue, 312 through 328 North Juanita Avenue, and 3812 through 3838 Oakwood Avenue. Uh, and I will need a second for this clarifying motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any others, Mr. O'Farrell?
Uh, that is it, Madam President. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Price.
Uh, yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to request the, uh, item 11 be continued until tomorrow. Item 11, please.
Okay, there's been a request to continue item 11 from Mr. Price until tomorrow. Without objection, that will be the order. Anything else, Mr. Price?
No, not this time, Madam...
Thank you.
Madam President, thank you.
Mr. Bonin?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I'd like to, uh, offer an amendment, I guess a substitute resolution, actually, for item 21, uh, and that would, uh, strike the last whereas clause and the therefore be resolved clause to read as follows. Whereas for more than two and a half years, the state of California has failed to justify continued operations of the Playa del Rey gas facility in the face of the considerable and documented risks to the neighboring community and to an airport that is a regional economic engine, now therefore be resolved with the concurrence of the mayor that by adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles hereby includes in its state legislative program support for any legislation or administrative action which would result in the closure of the Playa del Rey natural gas storage facility located at 8141 Gulana Avenue in Playa del Rey, California 90293 pursuant to a just transition process and a timeline for closure of the facility. And, uh, Mr. Corretz has agreed to second, I believe.
Good. Mr. Corretz, is that correct? Thank you.
Absolutely.
This item will be referred to committee without objection?
And, uh, that is all I have today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Hi, request to hold item number 18 on the desk for an upcoming amendment.
Members, are there any others? All right, we're gonna... We're gonna come back to, um, item 18, Mr. Harris Dawson, so you can read that into the record before we take public comment. So let's go ahead and vote on some items which, uh, public comment has already been satisfied, Madam Clerk. Let's go ahead and vote on items 6 through 17, exclude, um, 16, because we're gonna take that vote separately.
And I'll also exclude item 11, which has been continued.
So go ahead and read out the items again that we're gonna be voting on.
Thank you. We are taking a vote now on items 6 through 10, 12 through 15, and 17.
Let's go ahead and open the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
No, girl.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Could I just go ahead and vote on item 16? Go ahead and call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, no.
Harris Dawson. Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Corretz.
No.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, two noes, the item passes.
Mr. Krikorian, do you want to speak on items 31 and 32 before we take a vote?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Both items, 31 and 32, uh, are routine matters regarding settlement. Uh, both, the Budget and Finance Committee has considered both matters and approved the city attorney's recommendations, uh, and we recommend, uh, approval by the council of those recommendations. Because they're routine matters, they can be taken up in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Members, are there any questions? Mr. Sadio?
No, Madam Chair, that was for a previous matter. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and open the roll on item 31 and 32.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. If I may, in the item number 31, in the case entitled Alex Aguilar Jr. et al. versus the City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement. In item number 32, in the case entitled Bedrosian et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement. Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Yes.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, let's go back to item 18. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a, uh, amendment. Uh, I move that the matter of consideration and actions related to the draft and final environmental impact report, errata mitigation monitoring program, mitigation measures, communication from the Los Angeles City Planning Commission and Ordinance, first consideration, item 18 on today's council agenda relative to effectuating a vesting zone change to remove Broadway community design overlay, cue condition number seven, which requires a 30% minimum and permits a 40% maximum lot coverage for any portions of a building over 150 feet in height for the redevelopment on a... Of a surface parking lot with a new mixed-use building above the Metro Regional Connector historic Broadway rail station. Metro Regional Connector Historic Broadway Rail Station And That Will Contain Up To 680 Residential Units Of Which Up To 45 Units Will Be Set Aside For Workforce Housing Units And 10,000 Square Feet Of Ground For Commercial Uses. In Total, Including 9,810 Square Foot Metro, Portal, And Plaza And Up To 700,036 Square Feet Of Floor Area On An 118,510 Net Square Foot Lot For A Floor Area Ratio Of 6 To 1, The Proposed Uses Will Be Located Within A 56-Story Building And Will Measure 570 Feet At The Highest Roof Line And 608 Feet At The Top Of The Highest Pair Pact For Properties Located At 213 South Spring Street, 200 Through 210 South Broadway, And 232 Through 238 West Second Street Subject To Modified Conditions Of Approval Be Adopted And Amended As Follows. Instruct The Planning Department To Prepare New Zone Change Ordinance To Modify Q Condition Number 17 To Remove Its Prohibition On Temporary Sign In As Much As Temporary Signs Are Allowed By The Broadway Sign District Ordinance Number 184055.
Okay, I Will Stick In That.
Thank You.
Alright, Members, We're Gonna Go Ahead And Move On To Public Comment. Madam Clerk, Can You Please Read Out The Calling Information For Members Of The Public?
Thank You. As Indicated On The Agenda, Members Of The Public Wishing To Offer Public Comment Should Call 669-254-5252 And Use Meeting ID Number 160-535-8466 And Then Press Pound. Then Press Pound Again When Prompted For Participant ID. Once Admitted Into The Meeting, Press *9 To Request To Speak. Let Me Repeat, Call 669-254-5252 And Use Meeting ID Number 160-535-8466 And Then Press Pound. Then Press Pound Again When Prompted For Participant ID. Once Admitted Into The Meeting, Press *9 To Request To Speak.
Okay, Thank You, Mr. City Attorney. Can You Go Ahead And Provide Our Speaking Rules To Members Of The Public And Also Include The Items That We're Gonna Be Taking Public Comment On?
Yes, Absolutely. So To Members Of The Public Calling In, When It's Your Turn To Speak, Please State Which Of The Agenda Items You'd Like To Speak On. The Items That Are Open For Comment Are Items 1 Through 5 And 18 Through 30 Only. The Other Items Have Either Been Continued Or Voted On. You Have One Minute To Speak Per Item, Up To 3 Minutes Total, And If You Wish, 1 Minute For General Public Comment. Please Speak On The Items First Before Doing Your General Public Comment. We'll Tell You When Your Time's Up. When Speaking On The Agenda Items, You Must Be On Topic. Our Goal Is To Get Through As Many Speakers As We Can. If You're Not Speaking On Topic, Or If We Can't Tell Whether You're Speaking On An Agenda Item, You Will Get One Brief Warning From Me Or The President. If You Do Not Immediately Get Clearly On Topic, Or Again Stray Off Topic, The President Will Cut You Off And You Will Forfeit The Rest Of Your Speaking Time And Will Move On To The Next Speaker. We Will Take 30 Minutes Total Of Public Comment. Again, The Items Are 1 To 5 And 18 To 30 Only. Finally, For Members Of The Public Calling In To Speak, As Soon As You Hear Someone Address You, You're Live At The Council Meeting. If You're Also Listening To The Council Meeting On Your Computer, Channel 35, Or Other Device, Please Turn Down The Volume On Those Devices Immediately. There's A Time Delay Between The Live Meeting And The Broadcast On Those Devices And It Will Be Very Confusing If You Continue To Listen On Those Devices. Thank You, Madam President.
Thank You. Let's Go Ahead And Take The First Speaker.
Please State Your Name And The Item You'd Like To Speak On?
Yes, Hello, My Name Is Ethan Censer. I'd Like To Speak On General Public Comment And Item 21, If That's Possible.
Okay, You Have One Minute For Each. Go Ahead.
Thank You So Much. My Name Is Ethan Censer. My Phone Number is 8888. I'm A Community Organizer With Food And Water Action. First Off, I Wanted To Thank Councilmember Bonin For Bringing Forward The Resolution And Amending It On The Playa Del Rey Gas Storage Facility, And I Hope To See That Brought Back And Voted Soon On Council. I Would Likewise Like To Urge Councilmember President Martinez To Bring To Council, Councilmember Lee's Resolution On Eliso Canyon, Which Demands Similar. A Year Ago, Our Mayor Declared The Begin Of The End Of Natural Gas In Los Angeles And The Very Number Of All Is Clear. We Know That Polluting Fossil Fuel Storage Facility With A History Of Leaking Toxins Into The Heart Of A Densely Packed Community Cannot And Should Not Be Long For This Well. And Given That Reality, It's Time That We Start Acting Proactively. Across The Country, Oil And Gas Companies Are Going Bankrupt Without A Plan For Their Stranded Assets, Our Energy Grid Is Draining Under Climate Change, But Rather Than Having Built Out A Resilient Energy Grid That Would Need, We're Left Handcuffed To Aging And Outdated Infrastructure. None Of These Problems Are Surprises, Right? But Somehow Taxpayers, Workers, And Vulnerable Populations Have Still Been Left Suffering The Consequences Of Bad Planning.
Thanks. Would You Move On To Your General Public Comment Now?
Yeah, Of Course. So Just In General, I Would Like To Say That SoCal Gas Does Not Have A Plan For A Just Transition For This Site, And They're Going To Get What They Can Out Of It And Leave Us Clean Of Their Mess, So It's Really On Us To Hold Them Accountable While We Can. The Sooner We Begin Having Conversation On Creating A Plan For Transitioning This Site, The Better Chance We Have To Ensure A Process Puts Community First, Ensure Its Workers Are Provided With Family-Sustaining Jobs And Builds Long-Term Resiliency For Our Energy System. That Opportunity Will Not Always Be Here. I Would Encourage You To Follow The Lead Of The Culpey City Council, Who Just Last Week Began Work On A Real Plan, Not A Study, But A Plan To Fill Out, To Phase Out Oil Drilling And The Affection Of The Inglewood Oil Field. Local Officials From The Counties, To The State Legislature, To Numerous Democratic Clubs Across The Area Around This Site Have Made Their Voices Heard On This. I Would Urge You, Once This Resolution Comes Back, To Call On The Governor To Commit To Closing Down This Dangerous Site And Create A Just Transition Process And Timeline For That To Actually Happen. Thank You So Much.
Alright, Thank You. Let's Go Ahead And Take The Next Speaker.
Please State Your Name And The Item You'd Like To Speak On?
My Name Is Catherine Ronan, And I Live In Mar Vista, Close To The Playa Del Rey Gas Storage Field Operated By SoCal Gas. I'm Speaking On Item 21 And General Public Comment. It Has Been 2 Years Since The California Council On Science And Technology Found That The Playa Facility Presents A Relatively Higher Risk To Health And Safety Than The Other Facilities In California. Since The Gas Storage Field Is In An Urban Location Close To Hundreds Of Thousands Of Residents, An Event Similar To The Blowout At Eliso Canyon Would Be Catastrophic. And Since The Facility Stores Only 1% Of The State's Gas Reserve, It Would Not Be Missed If It Were Shut Down, Especially If The City And State Are Making Progress In Reducing Our Reliance On Fossil Fuels Such As Natural Gas. Therefore, It Seems Logical To Proceed To Close The Playa Del Rey Gas Storage Field In A Timely Manner. I Urge The Council To Approve The Resolution As Amended By Councilmember Bonin And Stand With The Community In Calling Explicitly For The State To Close The Gas Storage Facility At Playa Del Rey. We Need A Plan To Close The Site. We Do Not Need Another Feasibility Study.
Please Go On To Your General Public Comment.
In General, I Would Also Support A Similar Resolution To Shut Down The Eliso Canyon Gas Storage Facility. I Greatly Appreciate Your Attention To The Health And Welfare Of The Residents Of The Great City Of Los Angeles And For Conveying Our Concerns To The State Of California. Thank You.
Thank You, Speaker.
Please State Your Name And The Item You'd Like To Speak On?
Yes, I'm Speaking On Item Number 32. Can I Speak On Item 32, Or No?
No, We Voted On It Already, And We Had Taken Public Comment In Committee. You Can Speak In General Public Comment If You Want.
Okay. I'd Like To Speak To The Matter Of, I'm A Resident Of Bel Air. I Received An Email And A Call To Action To Attend The City Council Meeting From The Bel Air Association. I've Received A Multitude Of Correspondents Over The Last Couple Years Regarding This Issue. Today, Mr. Harasik Is Asking The City For $5 Million To Demolish A Home For His Own Personal Benefit, And The Dispute Has Now Been Depleting The City's Resources For 8 Years. This Home Was Permitted, Near Complete, And Had Over 700 Deputy And City Inspections. Mr. Harasik, An Active Attorney, Has Manipulated The City's Civil Court System Through Ex parte Hearing And Was Able To Get The City And A Judge To Order A Demolition Of The House Without Even Having An Actual Hearing. This Case Has Not Even Gone To Trial. Furthermore, He's Manipulated The Bel Air Association In Which He, His Wife Sits, Many Of Her Friends Such As Marcia Hobbs, Former Owner Beverly Hills Carrier.
Thank You, Sir, Your Time Is Up. Thank You. Next Speaker?
Please State Your Name And The Item You'd Like To Speak On?
This Is Mark Salzberg. I'd Like To Speak On Item 21, General Public Comment.
You Have One Minute For Each. Go Ahead.
Thank You. I Want To Thank Everybody For Considering Item Number 21. As Mentioned Earlier, This Is An Item That Is Way Long Overdue. We're Talking About A Gas Field That Has Been In Operation Since 1942. It's Time To Close It Down. I Am With A Group Of Democratic Clubs, 7 Democratic Clubs, That Have Passed A Resolution Calling For The Shutdown Of The Gas Field And The Stoppage Of Putting Gas Into That Field While We're Working On A Plan To Decommission It. I Want To Apologize To The Council For The Poor Formatting Of My Written Comments And The Resolution That Has Been Submitted. I Will Resubmit It As A Formatted Document. Thank You Very Much. That's All I Have.
Thank You.
Please State Your Name And The Item You'd Like To Speak On?
Good Morning. I'd Like To Speak On General Public Comment And Agenda Item 21.
Okay, You Have One Minute For Each. Go Ahead.
Thank You. Good Morning, President Martinez And Councilmembers. My Name Is Catherine Pease, And I'm The Director Of Science And Policy At Heal The Bay. As An Environmental Organization Focused On Ensuring That Our Coastal Waters And Watersheds Are Safe, Healthy, And Clean, Ending Reliance On Fossil Fuels Is One Of Heal The Bay's Top Priorities. SoCal Gas's Playa Del Rey Storage Facility Is A Concern For 3 Reasons. 1, Its Long-Term Existence Stands Counter To The Urgent Need To Address The Climate Crisis. 2, It Is Located In A Densely Populated Area Of Our City, Making It A Health And Safety Risk. 3, It Abuts The Biona Wetlands Ecological Reserve, Potentially Affecting Native Species And Endangered Wildlife. In Order To Mitigate Climate Change, We Must Transition To Renewable Energy Systems Across The Board, And We Must Do So Twistily. Sea Level Rise, Ocean Acidification, Extreme Heat, Wildfires, And Drought Will All Be More Severe Unless We Drastically Reduce Our Production And Consumption Of Oil And Natural Gas. We Need SoCal Gas To Begin To Plan For That Reduced Consumption Future, And We Do Not Believe That They Will Unless They Are Compelled To By Government Regulation. Recent Investigations By The LA Times Have Brought To Life That SoCal Gas Is Not A Good-Faced Partner In The Critical Effort To Enact Sensible Climate Systems In California. They Have Suited The State Of California To Obstruct Climate Policy And Used Ratepayer Money To Evade Safety Protocols And Lobby For The Expansion Of Gas Consumption. SoCal Gas Has Been A Long-Time Funder Of Heal The Bay. While We Never Let Contributions Affect Our Advocacy Work, As A Result Of These Latest Revelations Of Their Egregious Actions In The Face Of Climate Change, We Have Decided To Stop Accepting Their Contributions From This Point Forward. We Urge The Council To Adopt The Resolution To Support The Feasibility Study To Close The Gas Facility. Thank You For Your Time.
Thank You, Speaker.
Okay, Next Speaker?
Please State Your Name And The Item You'd Like To Speak On?
My Name Is Sarah Wiltong, And I'd Like To Speak On Item 21 And General Public Comment.
You Have One Minute For Each. Go Ahead.
Thank You. As Stateer, My Name Is Sarah Wiltong, And I'm Contacting You On Behalf Of BizFED, The Los Angeles County Business Federation. We Are In Alliance To Over 200 Business Associations To Represent 450,000 Employers With 4 Million Employees In Los Angeles County. We Are Here To Express Our Strong Opposition To Item 21, A Resolution Asking The State To Do A Feasibility Study On The Closing Of The Playa Del Rey Natural Gas Power Plant, And We Believe The Substitute Resolution Is Even Worse. We Find It Highly Concerning That The City Council Is Considering This Resolution Given That Millions Of California Residents Are Currently Experiencing Rolling Blackouts, Which Hurts The Most Vulnerable Among Us. While Some Elected Officials Are Saying Those States Failed To Predict These Shortages, The California Independent Systems Operator Last September Warned Of California's 2020 Energy Shortfalls, And Many In The Business Community Have Been Warning For Years The Fragility Of The Grid And Our Need For A Diversified Energy Portfolio. This Has Been Ignored, And These Rolling Blackouts Could Have Been Prevented. We Need Clean Natural Gas To Help Power Our Grid And Provide A Backstop When Grid Capacity Is At Its Peak. Now Is Not The Time To Consider The Closure Of The Playa Del Rey Natural Gas Power Plant. We Hope The Current Situation Is Enough Of A Feasibility Study, And We Ask That You Reconsider. And That's It For My Comment.
Alright, Thank You. Next Speaker?
Please State Your Name And The Item You'd Like To Speak On?
My Name Is Chase Myra, And I'd Like To Speak On Number 21 And General Comment.
You Have One Minute For Each. Go Ahead.
I'd Like To Thank The Council For Uplifting Community Demands To The Governor, And I'm A Small Business Owner Who Lives In Mar Vista Neighborhood Near The Facility, And I Volunteer With The Tech Play Now Because This Facility Threatens The Health And Safety Of Myself And Those That I Love. There's Strong Support Of Closing Down The Playa Del Rey Site, And For Good Reason. The Site Has Had A Number Of Blowouts And Leaks Over The Past Years. On January 11th, 2019, An Oil Well On A Construction Site In Marina Del Rey Blew Open Sending Natural Gas About 100 Feet Into The Air Surrounding A Heavily Populated Area Next To The Marina. The Well Was Capped After A Reported 10 Minutes But Before An Estimated 100,000 Cubic Feet Of Natural Gas Was Released According To The California Department Of Conservation. And Ongoing Leaks Have Been Found At The Site As Recently As June 2019. SoCal Gas Has Been In The Hot Seat In The Council Chapers Time And Time Again For Incidents In Multiple City Districts And Has Repeatedly Failed To Properly Notify And Communicate With The Councilmembers Of Those Districts. The City And Its Public Deserve Better. Studies Have Showed That Los Angeles Does Not Need Eliso Canyon And Playa Should Likewise Be Shut Down. I Urge The Council To Amend Their Resolution And Stand With The Community In Calling Explicitly For The Full Closure Of The Facility At PDR. I Urge The City Council To Ask The State To Create A Clear Timeline And Just Transition Process For Closing The Site. I Urge Council President Martinez To Schedule The Resolution In Support Of Shutting Down Eliso Canyon Gas Storage Facility For A Vote Before The Full Council ASAP. If We Act On Playa, We Must Act On Eliso. Thank You.
Thank You. Next Speaker?
Please State Your Name And The Item You'd Like To Speak On?
Donna Troy Wengler, Item Number 21.
You Have One Minute. Go Ahead.
Thank You. First, I'd Like To Thank The Council For Listening To The Community Who Cares About The Wellbeing Of Our Neighbors And The Planet. Upon Moving To California 30 Years Ago, I've Been Proud To Call Myself A Californian. I See California As Being The Leader In Innovation And Creativity. I See California As A Role Model For Other States Who Too Want Clean Air And Improve Public Transportation System And To Transition To Renewable Energy. Taking The Courageous Step In Closing Down The Playa Del Rey Natural Gas Facility Now Will Strengthen California's Role As A Model For Other States Looking To Keep The Communities Safe And To Transition To Alternative Energy Sources. I Ask You To Please Make This Full Decision Now, Develop A Clear Timeline For Closure We Can Count On, And To Create A Just Transition Process For Closing Down The Site. Thank You.
Next Speaker?
Please State Your Name And The Item You'd Like To Speak On?
Hi, My Name Is Andrea Leon Grossman, And I Want To Speak On Item 21 And General Public Comment.
You Have One Minute For Each. Go Ahead.
Hi, Again, My Name Is Andrea Leon Grossman, And I'm An Environmental Justice Advocate. I Am Strongly Supporting Item 21 Because We All Deserve To Have Clean Air And Clean Energy. The Gas Storage Facility Has Been Poisoning Communities And Is Not Just In The West Side. The Prevaling Winds Blow Into Environmental Justice Communities, Into Inglewood, Into Longdale, Into Places Where People Corral Live, And I Do Look Up To Councilmember President Martinez Because She's A Champion Of Environmental Justice, And We Really Deserve Not To Be Poisoned By SoCal Gas. We Know That There's A Catastrophic Loss Of Life If This Facility Blows Out. We Know That We're Gonna Have An Earthquake Soon, And No One Deserves To Die The Way My Cousin Died In Mexico City. We Know That We Have Infrastructure Underneath Our Houses, Our Businesses, That Can Blow Up And Have Gas Basically Everywhere When We Have An Earthquake. My Cousin Died Waiting To Be Rescued, And No One Deserves To Die The Same Way. We Know That- We know that first responders deserve to be doing their work in the safest conditions possible. I just know that no one deserves to die that way, and no Angelenos deserve better and cleaner energy. No one deserves to be poisoned by this type of energy, and we really need to advocate for a just transition. I hope that the council goes to support these resolutions and for just transition so that everyone can breathe cleaner air. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Michael Lopez, and I'd like to speak on item 21 and general public comment.
You have one minute for each. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to voice my support for item number 21. This facility should be closed. This is a very dangerous, you know, instance of energy being stored there. And for my general public comment, I just wanted to say, for months, the public has begged you to do something about rent and mortgages, and now another branch of the California government is begging you to do something by September 1st. The California Judiciary Council is imploring you to enact protections for renters because they do not draft laws. They enforce them. You have the power to make laws protecting renters and small landlords. You have the power to suspend rent. You have the power to do something to help mom-and-pop landlords you care about. However, only 21.2% of landlords in LA are individual mom-and-pop. The remaining 78.8% are federally owned, managed, run by nonprofit or corporate owners. This data comes from the West Valley People's Alliance via CoStar. Please stop trying to kick this responsibility up the chain. You have the power to do something. Thank you. That's my time.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jane Fowler, and I would like to speak on item 21 and public comment.
You have one minute for each. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much for listening to all of us in the community here. At Playa Del Rey, the site has been a number, has been, has seen a number of blowouts and leaks over the past years. 2011, the gas storage facility was found leaking from numerous wells in the area, and it resulted in injections to the site being halted. 2013, there was a vent stack explosion that caused 100-foot flames to shoot into the air. It goes on and on, even June 2019. So I call on the council to please amend their resolution and stand with the committee to close Playa Del Rey immediately, and I urge Council President Martinez to schedule a resolution in support of shutting down Aliso Canyon Gas Storage Facility for a vote before the full council ASAP. We need to act on Playa, and we also must act on Aliso Canyon. I lived through the Aliso Canyon gas leak, and I'm still living through it, and, you know, it killed my dog, my husband almost died, my family, myself, my daughter is affected by it. In fact, my daughter won't come home to visit because she can't breathe when she gets here. It just goes on and on, and I would like to see Playa, because it's in such a populated area, not have to go through what we went through. If you have a blowout there, it would be catastrophic. So I please urge the committee to give us a timeline on when this is going to happen, and please shut down Playa Del Rey, and I would like Aliso Canyon to come to a vote also as soon as possible. Thank you so much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, hi. Stuart Waldman, President of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, BICA. I'm calling in regards to item 21.
Good morning, sir. Go ahead. You have one minute.
Thank you. We're calling to express our huge concerns with item 21. We were concerned before, but now with the substitute resolution introduced by Councilmember Bonin, it's even worse. Considering the closing of Playa Del Rey Natural Gas Storage Facility is simply poor timing and hugely inappropriate, as the Los Angeles region is currently experiencing a heat wave in the San Fernando Valley and throughout the city, we've already seen blackouts which continue to impact Angelenos. It's clear that all energy sources, including natural gas, are needed to meet the energy demands of households across the city at a time when many are working from home to help fight the spread of COVID-19. Closing any of the city's natural gas facilities will result in more blackouts. More blackouts will mean people working from home will not be able to connect online and conduct their daily tasks, which could very well destroy people's livelihoods.
Thank you, Mr. Waldman.
This motion is just a bad idea, and we urge you to oppose the closure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Kyoko Hibino. I wanted to speak about item number 21 and a general public comment.
You have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kyoko Hibino. I am a resident of Porto Rant, where worst gas rollout in American history occurred in 2015, and where North San Fernando Valley community still currently suffering negative health impacts from ongoing emissions of toxins and carcinogens. No one should ever put in the environment to live in like we are in North San Fernando Valley, so as communities in Playa Del Rey. So I urge council to amend the resolution and the full closure of the gas facility in Playa Del Rey. And also, I urge Council President Martinez to schedule the resolution in support to shut down Aliso Canyon Gas Storage Facility for a vote before the full council as soon as possible. Shutting down unnecessary Aliso Canyon is critical for the transition to 100% clean renewable energy future in California. LA should show the leadership to protect people and environment and join other cities, a lot of cities in California, taking big steps to the all-elective building call. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
General public comment.
What items do you want to speak on?
Yeah, it's Eric Previn. I'd like to speak on all items and a general public comment.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes for your items and one minute for your general public comment.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering why current price is continuing item 11 about the fatal shooting of Daniel Hernandez by that woman McBride, who's very connected to the Los Angeles Police protectively. Now, he wants to have an independent investigation.
Mr. Previn, that item's not for discussion today. It's been continued to tomorrow. So can you move on to the next items?
Well, I know, but tomorrow I might be tied up, or you might not let me through.
Mr. Previn, you know what the rules are. Come on. Speak on the rest of the items.
Yeah, I do know what the rules are, and I do know what the rules are, and I follow the law. And this is about the California Attorney General. I'll move on because we're going to litigate that one. But listen, the Docless On-Demand Personal Mobility Pilot Program.
So, Mr. Previn, we voted on that one, too. You've been off-topic three times now. I suggest we cut him off, Madam President.
Don't cut me off. I'll try to get to the items that I would like to speak to, sir. I'm sorry, you don't have the same interest I do. 21 is the item of the day, and obviously, people are concerned about shutting down a natural gas facility. Stuart Waldman's moving testimony about how by shutting down a potential natural gas facility, people would be losing their internet connection, because apparently at some point those things are linked in his mind. It's clear that he's on the side of business and energy and not on the side of the environment, as has been seen over the years from Mr. Waldman, and his interests are very clear and specific. But, you know, my concern is how we can, you know, take action behind Mike Bonin today when he was the only dissenting vote on Mr. Bustainos shoved through the other day regarding the deeply concerning port environmental concern.
Again, you're off-topic, Mr. Previn.
Do you want me to go to general public comment, sir? You're being extremely contentious and inappropriate during my first amendment.
Mr. Previn, go back and forth. Just get to general public comment, or I'm going to have you move on. Come on.
Well, maybe you could draft up a penalty schedule, and I'll get to my general public comment. My general public comment is beginning now, so please remain out of my comments. Look, the city council has jobs due, and you set up these committees in which to do some of it, but now you've reduced the committees to very scant. Today, you only have public safety and a few items from other committees on these agendas, which mean that if you weren't available at that time, you don't have a shot at it at city council, which is absurd and ridiculous, as we've seen. I challenged you in the special meeting context about using that exemption, but now it's being challenged again because the people have a lot to say, and you've just made it harder and harder. You've reduced your committees by a high percentage. You've reduced one meeting a week for no good reason because you're all loafing around without masks on on Zoom, which makes absolutely no sense, Council President. I urge you to put a mask on if we're going to pontificate to everybody else about wearing one. And I just think that we need to do a better job of including the public who have reasonable things to say. And I want to ask Melinda Abdullah, who I do respect, whether or not she's supporting Holly Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Don't forget to wear your mask. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I'm Jolly Holloman. I'd like to speak about item number 21 and general public comment.
Good morning. You can go ahead and speak on both items. You have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mary. Hi, I'm Jolly Holloman. I work in Sandelay Center for Biological Diversity, FWA, and most recently, I'm involved in Extinction Rebellion SFB. So first, I want to thank the council for listening to communities and urging the city towards a future without these gas plants. Our world and our city need a just transition to a 100% free economy that's free of carbon. This isn't going to be an easy task. It's not going to be quickly accomplished either. So remember though that this site, Playa Del Rey, only accounts for 1% of its natural gas storage capacity, and sites in Northern California have even more capacity and are now in the process of being closed. So to shove it from Los Angeles to Aliso Canyon and Playa should likewise be shut down. I mean, I'm in such an echo chamber here anyways. You're, you know, listening to all of us or you're listening to none of us about that anyhow, so I'll just move on to my general. Lastly, I do want to thank my councilmember, Mary Martinez, for her attention, and I want to once again strongly urge her, please, to sign the No Fossil Fuel Money pledge, to join her esteemed colleagues, Councilmembers Riley, Boden, and DeLeon, to adopt a policy to not natively accept the contributions over $200,000 from the PAC, lobbyists, or executive executives of fossil fuel companies. I'd love it if Mary's office would give me a call back or reply to one of my emails. We are Extinction Rebellion. Your time is up. You must act now. We have your number and you can talk to us then. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, I'd like to, my name is Wendy Rosen, and I'd like to speak on item 21 and general public comment.
Good morning. You have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Good morning, council members. I'm a resident in the Santa Monica Mountains, and last week, hundreds of my community members called the fire department to complain about heavy smoke coming down into our community for fear that a fire had broken out. We were informed by the fire department that this fire was actually at Lake Hughes, miles away from our community. Whenever there's a fire here, and there have been many, last year we were evacuated, I along with 10,000 of my neighbors, I think about Playa Del Rey and the gas storage facility. I think about a catastrophic incident that is not an if, but a when, and I think about my fellow community members suffering the same kinds of ailments as Aliso Canyon. And so I'm here today to say, you know, we can do something proactively instead of reactively, and I really want to thank my councilmember, Mike Bonin, for being at the forefront of leading us into shutting down a facility that only provides 1%, mostly to commercial use, and phasing us off fossil fuels as is really necessary at this time. You've heard all the reasons why. I join my community members. I thank my councilmember and the council, and I ask you, please, to do this as swiftly as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker. Members, that concludes, speakers, for this morning's meeting. Madam Clerk, just go ahead and prepare to vote on items 1 through 5, item 20, and items 20, I'm sorry. I'm going to go back and ask that we start with item 21, which was a substitute motion that was introduced by Mr. Bonin. We have to vote on the substitute, so go ahead and open the roll.
Thank you. This is to vote on whether to substitute item 21. Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Bustaino.
Bustaino, aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
A very enthusiastic aye.
Krikorian.
Jimmer, perfect.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Bustaino, did you have a question?
Yes, I want to make sure this item is going to be sent to committee, ma'am.
Yes, that was instructed when the substitute motion was introduced.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on the following items, members. Let's go ahead and vote on item 1 through 5, item 20, and items 23 through 30. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Bustaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
14 ayes. These items are adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item 18, which was amended by Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you. Motion, Harris Dawson, Martinez, Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Bustaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Aye.
Corretts.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
14 ayes. The motion is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item 19. This was amended by Mr. O'Farrell. Go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you. Motion, O'Farrell, Rodriguez, Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Bustaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes. The motion is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item 19. This was amended by Mr. O'Farrell. Go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you. Motion, O'Farrell, Rodriguez, Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Bustaino.
Aye.
Sadio. Fourteen ayes. The motion is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item 19. This was amended by Mr. O'Farrell. Go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you. Motion, O'Farrell, Rodriguez, Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes. The motion is adopted.
Okay, members, let's move on to verbal motions. Madam Clerk, how many do we have?
We have seven verbal motions to read into the record.
Okay, seven, so go ahead and start with the first one.
Thank you. The first motion was introduced by Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson to be referred to the Budget and Finance Committee. It is to instruct the CIO to identify $220,000 in funding for hiring and training community intervention workers for the Safe Passages Program into, in two South Los Angeles parks in Council District Eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rue. Next?
Next is a motion introduced by Councilmember Sadio to be referred to the Homelessness and Poverty Committee. It is to instruct the CIO with the assistance of the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority to require that all current and future project room key sites in the city provide laundry facilities. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Madam Ms. Rodriguez. Next?
Next is a motion introduced by Councilmember Sadio to be referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee requesting the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance that would prohibit and suspend any certificate of occupancy for any hotel in Los Angeles, which is being used to house and detain migrant children and families under the direction of private security companies. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Corretts.
The next verbal motion has been introduced by Councilmember Rodriguez to appropriate $120 to the Heritage GCP Account Fund to the General Services Fund for services in connection with illumination of City Hall to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment. This is a Rule 16 motion presented by Councilmember Rodriguez and seconded by Councilmember Martinez. The next verbal motion is a Rule 16 introduced by Councilmember Rue to move $6,000 from the AB 1290 Fund to the Board of Public Works Fund for median maintenance efforts in the Larchmont Community coordinated by the Office of Community Beautification, with services to be provided by the Coria Town Youth and Community Center. And a seconder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you.
Next?
The next verbal motion is to be referred to the Ad Hoc COVID Recovery Committee. This has been introduced by Councilmember Rue. This moves that the CIO, with the assistance of the Housing and Community Investment Department, report to council on the feasibility of applying for municipal liquidity facility loan assistance in order to provide rent forgiveness to those within the city of LA who have been impacted by COVID-19, as well as with a cost analysis and options for potential program structure and implementation. And a seconder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you. The last verbal is a resolution, a commendatory resolution, that has been introduced by Councilmember Rodriguez. This resolves that the LA City Council commends Captain Rick Godinez for his unperilled service to the public in the LA Fire Department, and congratulates him on his professional accomplishments and accolade of the 2020 Firefighter of the Year Award. And a seconder?
I will second.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by the Council President Martinez. That completes the verbal motions that we have to read into the record.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. The city of Los Angeles has seen an increase 34% of motor vehicle thefts to date, year to date, so with that, I'd like to ask the police department be directed to report on the increase of motor vehicle thefts in the city, which areas have seen the largest increase in number of thefts, what percentage of stolen vehicles are recovered, and the steps the department's taking to address this problem.
Second.
Is there, hold on for just a second.
Who's your second, Mr. Buscaino?
The Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. Corretts, did you second that?
No, it wasn't me.
Ms. Rodriguez?
That was me.
Thank you. Any others, Mr. Buscaino?
Yes, yes, Madam President. If I can, I'd like to honor Sergeant Mark Kelly for his 32 years in form of a resolution for his faithful and dedicated service to the residents of the city of Los Angeles and to the Los Angeles Police Department, and wish him health, happiness, and continued success in his future endeavors. I've got one more.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Corretts. Next, Mr. Buscaino?
I did, I beat him to it.
Okay, who beat him to it? Mr. O'Farrell?
Okay.
It's, it's commendatory, so it's all council members, so.
Yeah, it's everyone. And lastly, Madam President, I'll move that the Department of General Services, with the assistance of the City Attorney's Office and the City Administrative Office, be directed to negotiate a non-for-profit lease in the amount of $1 a year for the city-owned parcel at 600 East L Street, Wilmington, APN number 7423026900, with SPCC Thrive LA for the construction and operation of a community garden.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Bonin.
Oh, I think I got one more. Standby, ma'am. The surplus donation, yes. Lastly, lastly, I'd like to move that the city council find that the Harbor Interfaith Services is eligible to purchase 12,002 GMC 2500 regular cab, truck VIN number 1GTHC24U72E197533, at below-market value $1, in accordance with LAAC Section 22.547, donation of surplus city equipment, as the recipient of the nonprofit organization has been established exclusively to further the services provided by the city, to request the city attorney to expedite preparation of appropriate documents to effectuate the sale and transfer, and three, instruct the city clerk to inform Harbor Interfaith Services, Tahia Hayslit, Executive Director of Harbor Interfaith, that the surplus equipment must be claimed within 60 days from the date of council approval at the request or notification of availability of the equipment, whichever occurs, or whichever occurs later, at which time, the equipment will revert to the city's surplus equipment pool for disposal by the Department of General Services.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Bonin. Any others, Mr. Buscaino?
That's it. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. I have one motion. It is a 245 motion of an area planning commission decision, request Rule 16 consideration since the last day for council to act will be a week from today. The motion reads, moving clause, I therefore move that pursuant to Charter Section 245, the city council take necessary steps to assert jurisdiction over the action of the West Los Area, West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission on case number ZA-2012-3354-CUB-CU-CDP-MEL-WDI-SPP-SPR-1A, as outlined in the area planning commission's August 7, 2020 letter of determination, I further move that upon assertion of jurisdiction by the city council, the matter be referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee.
Is there a second for Mr. Bonin's?
Second.
We didn't hear you. Who, who's the second? Mr. Bloomingfield, or was that you?
Bloomingfield, second.
Thank you. Any others, Mr. Bonin?
That is all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a motion that Councilmember Wesson and I are co-presenting together. This is regarding one of the rights that we hold dear as Americans and certainly as Los, as Angelenos, is the right to protest and protest in an unfettered way and, and challenge the government directly. And when that's done, folks ought not to suffer any kind of reprisals. And so, the moving clause of the motion that we're putting forward says, I therefore move that the police department be directed to report to the city council, the mayor, and the public within 21 days on the swatting incident that occurred on Wednesday, August 12, 2020, targeting Dr. Melina Abdullah, the co-founder of Black Lives Matter Los Angeles, at her private residence. This report should include information on what occurred, the nature of the false 911 call, any information on the suspect or suspects, and if their actions were politically motivated, and background on LAPD's investigation into this matter. I believe we have a couple folks who've agreed.
Second.
Second.
Second. Second.
Well, you've got like 10 seconds, Mr. Harris Dawson.
President, to join Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson in doing this, this disrupted a community, a community where I live, and these types of things are unacceptable. They, they cause so many, they can cause so many negative things, and, and this is something that's just totally unacceptable, and we should stop this crap before it starts. So I stand with Mr. Harris Dawson on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other verbal motions, Mr. Harris Dawson?
That concludes my verbal motion.
All right, thank you. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. I have one verbal motion, and the moving clauses are now therefore be it resolved with the concurrence of the mayor, that by adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles hereby includes in its 2019-2020 federal legislative program support for HR 7015 and other actions which may be proposed to properly fund the United States Postal Service and halt and/or reverse all managerial and operational changes until Congress, the USPS Board of Governors, and the Postal Regulatory Commission have been able to fully review and take action on such proposals, and I further move that the city also hereby include support for HR 2382 in its 2019-2020 federal legislative program to relieve the USPS of the onerous obligation to be the only federal agency to be required to pre-fund a pension for 75 years.
Second. Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any others, Mr. Corretts?
No, that's it. Thank you, Madam President.
Members, any other verbal motions? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Council has motions for posting and referral. The motions will be posted on the Clerk's website shortly after the meeting for the public's viewing.
Okay, members, are there any announcements? Any adjourned motions? Okay, I have an adjourned motion. Colleagues, I want to ask that we adjourn today in the memory of Akeem Jamal Coburn. AJ was raised in Los Angeles, where he attended the Creative Learning Academy, John Burroughs Middle School, and Taff High School. After graduating from Taff High School, he attended the LA Trade Tech College, where he received his electrical line worker certification. He was a proud employee of the Department of Water and Power as an electrical craft helper, and a member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBW Local 18. AJ was a loving father to three girls, Logan, Paige, and Journey. When he wasn't at work, he enjoyed teaching the girls new things such as riding their bikes, swimming, cooking their favorite dishes, and loved playing board games with them on game night. AJ was recently engaged to the love of his life, Brandy Harris, who is also part of our city family and works for the Controller's Office. Their favorite song was "Forever Mine" by the OJs. In fact, they made a pact that every time that song came on, no matter where they were, they would stop and slow dance together. They love watching television series, and neither would dare watch an episode without the other. They could have fun anywhere they went, whether it was grocery shopping or on a planned dateline, I'm sorry, date night. He was a hardworking man and a thoughtful gentle giant, who was constantly preparing himself to grow for the betterment of himself and his family. There was no goal he set before himself that he did not meet. AJ exuded love, and the love was reciprocated by everyone who knew him. He is survived by his fiancee, Brandy Harris, his daughters Logan, Paige, and Journey, his mother Bernadette, his father George, and his sisters Candace, Jamelle, and Anna, and his brother CJ. May he rest in eternal, eternal peace. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask that the council today adjourn in the memory of an activist and a teacher well-known in our city, Ms. Bernice Ruth Goldstein. Bernice attended the University of Missouri, where she received her teaching credentials and met her husband, Albert Delugich. Albert was a recipient of a Pulitzer Prize for his local investigative specialized reporting and campaign against fraud and abuse of power within a St. Louis labor union. He worked as a reporter for the Los Angeles Times for almost two decades. Yet Bernice had the reputation of being a real, the real reporter in the family, and her natural curiosity in the, in the whereabouts of those she loved and cared for. She was a warm-hearted individual who loved meeting new people and spent time playing the piano at nursing homes for volunteer events. She loved spending time with her husband and volunteering at the Ronald McDonald House in Los Angeles, with a goal to support programs that improve the health and well-being of children. Bernice enjoyed organizing games and outings for all the neighborhood children along with her husband. She was an avid, avid bridge player, who was extremely motivated and passionate to become a teacher in Los Angeles. At the age of 40, she received her master's in education at Cal State LA and became a teacher with LA Unified School District. In 1989, she spent her second day of teaching demonstrating solidarity with teachers from our city on a picket line during the UTLA strike in 89, that resulted in the triumph of three successors, successive yearly salary increases, along with restructuring that implemented school site decision-making and school-based management. Bernice was resilient, and nothing could stop her from achieving her goals. She ran a half marathon when she was in her 50s, and was an active community member in the Los Feliz neighborhood. Beyond her active involvement in her community, she was a dedicated mother to her four children. She is survived by her two loving daughters, Joey and Sharon. Sharon is a part of, Sharon Delugich is a part of the City Hall family. She served as a senior policy director for Councilmember Ludlow, and she was chief of staff to Councilmember Goldberg. She remains chief of staff to School Board Member Goldberg in this moment. We send Sharon Delugich, the Goldberg family, and Ms., Ms. Bernice, and all of her loved ones, the deepest condolences and hope that she rests in peace.
I'd like to be listed on that as well, Madam President. I have an adjourned as well. Oh, sorry, Mr. Bonin.
Second, Mr. Bonin, did you, did you say something?
I'd like to be listed on the adjourned motion as well, please.
Okay. So would I, Mr. Harris Dawson. Hi, Jacob.
Yep, hello, Jacob. Madam President, I have an adjourned motion as well. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Stacy Renaud Bowden, B-O-W-D-E-N.
Go ahead.
Friend of my boys, but we're saddened by his loss and still not in a position to even talk about it, but if we could adjourn in his memory, I'm sure that his, his mother would be very appreciative.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wesson. Any other adjourned motions, members? Okay, seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Okay, seeing none, our meeting is adjourned.
We've reached nearly 500 megawatts of installed solar as of last year. And so 50,000 customers that have caught solar. If I'm a single-family homeowner and I want to go solar, what do I do? Our net metering program is available. If you want to purchase a solar system and help reduce your bill, you can do that. But if you can't afford to make that investment in solar and you're a single-family homeowner, um, we will actually partner with you. LADWP can install a solar system on your home and will actually provide you a, a monthly, uh, check, you know, or partnering with us on that solar program. And that's called our Solar Rooftops program. Information on that program is also available on ladwp.com/solar.